All of us managers are here and present. So our next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Yes.
My comment, I would like to pull something from the present agenda.
Certainly.
Manager, President.
Which one did you pull?
I'd like to pull permit 2023 059 Three Oaks Development.
Alrighty.
Is that the same one I wanted to pull?
Yes, it is.
No.
Okay, any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, do we all agree on the amended agenda? Everybody say aye please.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, I hear no nays. Okay, good. So now we're on to matters of public interest. Welcome to the board meeting. Anyone may address the board on any matter of interest in the watershed. Speakers must be abolished by the president. Please raise your hand with an app if online and wait to be recognized. State your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Additional comments may be submitted in writing. Generally, we do not take official action on items discussed, but may refer the matter to staff for a future report or direct the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Do I have anyone from the public who would like to comment? Yes. Manager Cook. Uh, Mr. Cook, excuse me. Anybody else? Mr. Cook is the only person. All right. Mr. Cook, please, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. First of all, my name's Larry Cook, 471 Big Corn Drive in Chana. Realize only have three minutes. Let me state, I don't think three minutes is generally enough for people to comment. At least if they have some significant comments. But first of all, I want to state that I object to this meeting as well as the workshop. Believe that any action taken is invalid as there are insufficient number of members legally appointed to take action. This board is not duly constituted. And I'm here to put all people on notice that actions taken at this meeting may not be authorized or valid and that they would proceed at their own risk. Excuse me. I also want to mention as far as the discussion of the governance manual. I was surprised I didn't see any red line comparisons. And I thought that there was no need for doing a slide presentation with such few changes, no one could tell what the differences are. I'm especially concerned about Manager Crafton's statement about everybody getting on the same page. You know, if that's what it takes, then you only need one person. And they should change the law so we only have one person to deal with if you're looking for everybody to be on the same page on that basis. Apparently, people weren't happy that what they wanted wasn't happening all the time, but so be it. I'm concerned also about the budget process and the attempt to slide the date for having a budget presentation. We all know it takes longer. Manager Nelson, I think raised a good question or point about having sufficient time to be able to go over the budget items. Been my experience over the past couple of years, there has not been sufficient time because the budget was either incomplete, et cetera, or not enough time for people to deal with it. Also, I comment about the governance manual. Sound like going to do away with Robert's Rules of Order, but I think it's important. Robert's Rules of Order was created even 100 years ago. And there's a reason for it to keep ordering to allow everybody to have an opportunity to speak. And I'm concerned that this will devolve into the board such as was chaired by Perry Forster on that basis. Also note that appears to me that several violations of the open meeting law with respect to this meeting concerning improper notice and designation. And again, as you know, my lawsuits, you know, address some of these. And it looks like we may have more. I was concerned also about the 10-year plan amendment. There was a lot of good discussion, et cetera, but there was no action plan. And you know, you can have strategy about maybe what we should do, but somebody has to come up with an action plan. And it didn't seem like anybody was appointing anybody to come up with an actual, you know, action plan. Also, I'm concerned that workshops, you know, soliciting comments and basically carrying on a meeting at a workshop, which is ostensibly designated as a non-voting portion of a meeting. I would mention that I thought Manager Peterson had good ideas for soliciting info for people who have an interest in that process of being able to click on portions of plan dealing with your interests would be a great process to have. Excuse me, on that basis. And finally, I just wanted to mention that I spent part of the day watching, looking at my window about the alum treatment being done on Lotus Lake, only to have a wake boat, you know, go plowing through the water now more than 30 minutes after the application, which I can't believe is good for any application of alum when my understanding is the purpose of the application is to reduce phosphorus. And that would not be allowing sufficient time, or I think, in process to allow the alum to settle out. But hopefully, there will be testing done to determine what, if any, effects that would have on the alum treatment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cook. That concludes your, actually, five minutes at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reading and approval of minutes. I'm looking for a motion and/or any changes that you have to the September 11th regular board meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the September 11th meeting as written.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any changes? Hearing none, all those who approve the reading and approval of minutes, say aye please. Aye. And no nays. Presentation by Joel. Thank you, we're so glad you're here. You're going to talk to us a little bit about task orders 047, 048, 049, and 050.
Thank you.
Okay. Terry will bring up the presentation. It's really short this time, I promise. I went long last time. You can go to the next one.
You can go right through.
Go right to it. So when we talked last time, we brought before you the four lake management work plans. And there was some discussion about the next steps with that. So one was a question about providing the matrix that was available that are used to decide on which lakes we would do. I don't have that in the slide, but it is in the cover memo that was provided in your packet. So it just kind of lays it out. It didn't score it, there wasn't a scoring system. We just use that as a decision matrix to discuss those with district staff. So that's how those lakes were there. So all that information is there and available for you in terms of which lake selections. The biggest ones were which ones were under chloride stress, which ones were discharging to waters that were, had significant investment in terms of alum treatments and watershed projects that we wanted to make sure we were protecting those downstream waters. Those are really important. And then which ones were really close to the standard. So both Mitchell and Red Rock are bouncing around the standard and in need of some work there. So that's kind of how we went through that decision process. And we can, I can answer any questions that you might have on that. And if you go to the next slide. So, and then there was some question about can district staff take on more so that we're able to do all of these lakes at the same time? And so we sat down with staff and talked through this. And these are some of the changes that we made. There's an economy of scale if we do all the modeling together. You can do all the GIS processing together. You can populate the models and do all that work at the same time. So we made some reductions based on that and the cost. And then we transferred some responsibilities over to district staff, including more of the summaries and mapping of the shoreline and vegetation conditions. So staff will take on more of those tasks under Bar's direction or input. I wouldn't say direction, but input. And then the fisheries summary and management strategies, those could be taken on by district staff too. For the aquatic vegetation and shoreline, it's the same thing where they'll take on more of the compiling the data, summarizing the data. And then Bar would do more of the data analysis for the metrics and establishing some of those endpoints that we talked about. And then staff would take more of a role in developing the shoreline restoration cut sheets. In discussing that with staff, a lot of that, those ideas are already there. They already kind of know what's missing in some of the shorelines, look at those matrix. So we put more on that plate, their plate, to summarize that and include those in the cut sheets. So that reduced it. And then finally, really, the fisheries management plan got transferred over to district staff with just some bar input. So Josh or whoever, the staff would take the lead on that with their background. And Bar would just provide some direction and input from our experience and incorporating that into the overall lake management plan. So that plan will actually be written by the district and all those pieces done by that. So those are the changes that we made. So that, that, these are the cost reductions that are in the cover memo. It took it down from about 355,000 to about $319,000 in terms of that. And you can see the fisheries plan went down the most significantly. And then walking through task by task with staff, we made adjustments to the other ones. So that's really what I have for you tonight in terms of what changes we made to those plans based on input from the last discussion.
Any questions from the manager?
So I have a question, it's for staff. Do we need to get interns or something to help with workload? Because it sounds like some people might be really busy.
First of all, thank you for bringing that up. I did have staff back while in that meeting with us since much of this would fall on him and Mr. Hartman. I think over the course of the winter, we'll be fine. Any work that carries over in the next spring, yes, we'll probably need to add another intern or two dedicated to either freeing up one of them to work on this or doing some of the background research. So, so we won't need one immediately, but we will need an extra one eventually.
That's all I have.
Okay. Yes.
Got a question. I believe I brought it up at the last presentation. I just wanted to clarify about the chloride input. And you were talking about chloride sensitivity. And you're still looking at the city and council. Is there any input in that chloride management plan or acknowledgement that it's not the private applicators or Highway 5? Just even if it's not the numbers, just that that's not included and is sort of accounted for within the modeling?
Sure. Yeah, there's some studies out there that have tried to account for that private application. And we certainly would incorporate that. I think the data that we would need from the cities is their application rates and when they're applying. The idea is to try to calculate on a given year what the mass load on the watershed is and the timing of that. And then look at that mass load move through the lake system. So let's say they're putting down, you know, 10,000 pounds of salt and we're seeing 5,000 pounds in the lake every year. Try those types of impacts. So absolutely, private applicators.
Especially like the Lake Susan industrial park area. Like there's, it's a, I would think, a significant source.
Agreed. Yes, absolutely. We definitely would include that.
Then I also had brought up, I think, task two was the one that mostly talked about current conditions and, you know, characterizing it with, I'd say, existing information. And then it made a statement about this will identify the primary stressors on the lake. But there could be other primary stressors that are not, we don't have data for? Is that going to be part of that task to identifying, say, like sediment resuspension we've talked about?
Yeah.
Is that, at least, where does that come in if it's, we don't have data on it already?
Well, you have to use literature values at that point. So we go through the literature and find out in urban environments like this, what are the standard stressors that are out there? Is it sediment resuspension? Is it invasive species? You know, all of those. So what we have data for, we certainly will summarize that in a way to understand whether that's a potential stressor or not. But we'll also go through the literature values and what we know to make sure that we're looking at those. You guys are taking a big step forward in that you're looking at nitrogen and chloride in a way that most districts aren't. And it's a real question of should you be managing nitrogen is a really important question. And I think that's a really important outcome of these studies is to start to answer that question as a part of the lake management plan.
Thank you. And I'm hoping we can use this. So I want to make sure it has what we are needing it to do.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from any of the other managers? Yes.
Comment. Don't mean this in a negative way, but it's, it seems like we're almost taking the middle man out of the process because our staff is so knowledgeable. And I mean, you've got a pretty intimate knowledge of what's going on in the lakes and with the fishery side of things. And it allows you to have more, a better part of the process or not?
Yeah, yeah. I think it takes funds and puts it into ground project, alum on projects like that.
You're up for this.
Yep.
One of the best things we've developed, Joe.
Thank you.
I'd concur with that. I just think we're far ahead of many other places here in the state. And I feel really proud of the fact that staff can do this. And we've got help to make this happen. I just, I'm really looking forward to seeing what's going to happen because of it. We're going to change how other watershed districts look at their lakes, I think, from this. Any other questions or comments now? I can, no? Thank you so much. Yes?
So I have one, one general question. So we talk about data and all these different elements of the way we're dealing with this. Are there standardized formats that you guys follow at this point where it's common across other practices? So when we talk about sharing or pulling in data, is there, is there a conversion process that's required? If you go from one area to another, one location to another, one jurisdiction? Are you, are using the same format, same language of sorts?
Yeah, right. So there, yes, there are some databases that go through a pretty rigorous screening process to make sure that the data is of certain quality before it will be published. EQUIS at the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is one that uses. The district follows those, right, Josh? I mean, you follow those same standards. And I think Bar maintains that, the data for the district. So it's all already gone through that process and in that same format. For data outside of the typical stuff, so if we start getting into Zooplankton data, phytoplankton, I think that's just would be developed as part of the district standards. But we certainly would follow state guidelines in terms of quality and review before we would adopt those data, if that's what you're asking.
It is. And I guess the conferences I've been to in the past, everybody talks about the data. And I never quite know if, if they're talking about the same data. If it, if it, if we talk, took about, talk about Wisconsin, for instance, are they a different language than Minnesota like they are in so many other ways?
Yeah, yeah. And most of them, there's federal guidelines for quality control or the state will clearly lay out a plan of what their quality controls. So the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has a very clear guideline about what the quality of data is required to be included in their database. And so you know it's meeting certain standards. And so you stick to those data sets. What, what you don't want is, you know, a data set that maybe somebody collected on their own or, you know, volunteer data sets usually get segregated. They're valuable, but they're not necessarily what we're going to make million dollar alum treatment decisions on. Things like that.
Thank you.
Yeah. President Peterson, manager, well, on that same vein, you know, we, we do, whenever there is a standardization that we can use, we utilize it. Our, all of our soil sampling is following the Cornell protocol. But we run into it in our own things where two different people will do point intercept surveys. And the data doesn't always match up. The methodologies aren't always the same. And that's something that Andrew and Mr. Maxwell have been trying to go through to compile that data into something meaningful throughout. So it is a good question and it's something that we do try and think of as we go through these.
Thanks.
Okay, yes.
So in that vein, so you do quality assurance, quality control. Does the uniqueness of each lake factor in or doesn't, or the standardized stuff just has to prevail? I mean.
The quality control is more about the lab test to make sure that it met the right lab test. It was collected under a specific protocol. You know, that they weren't contaminating the sample in any way. You follow those protocols. What depth does it sample at? All those types of things. So that's the QA QC, quality control part of it that's really important. So that's not, that's specific to the lab and the test and not specific to a lake or stream or some of those other factors. That's more in your sample design. When you're trying to answer a question, how do I design my sampling protocol? That's when it becomes lake by lake or very specific to the question that you're trying to answer.
Because you've educated us on the difference between shallow lakes and deep lakes and probably could use a review on it. He's the expert on that stuff, so. But it just seems like there are variables depending on what
Yes, absolutely.
your water body looks like.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I think we look like we have answered questions. So we are on to reports. First of which is to receive the citizen advisory committee report. Mr. Aller, are you here representing?
Good evening, everyone. I'll keep this brief and mindful, be mindful of your time. We held our meeting and Managers Crafton and Nelson joined us for our September 16th CAC meeting. We were thrilled to have Andy Forbes of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service provide us with a presentation on bird ecology in our watershed. This excellent presentation was recorded and is on the district's YouTube channel. So I encourage everybody, if you haven't already, to go to that and take a look. I won't labor the amazing facts and figures and, and some of the, some of them being shocking to me as to the migration of the number of birds that come through. And, and quite frankly, the things that are very simple that we can do to prevent kill off of the migrated birds as they come through. A brief discussion about the board's invitation to sponsor several CAC members in attending the Minnesota Watersheds Conference this December was discussed. And Andrew Peterson, Dave Paulson, and I have expressed our interest in attending to Administrator Jeffries. Ongoing discussions occurred related to water conservation efforts. And our topics included options for different cities notifying customers about high water usage, water audits, similar to energy audits given by power companies, an annual mailer with water conservation tips, and also different self-ordered options. Our next meeting is set for October 21st. And we expect to be receiving an update, a report from Administrator Jeffries on all things happening in the watershed. And then we'll continue our discussion of various city water conservation programs. And we're trying to learn what others are doing and how those things might be and the things that they're doing could be incorporated into what we're doing and how we can share that information across the cities.
Thank you. Any questions from any of the managers? Comment?
Say one question on the water conservation. Has anybody sort of stepped up to be the lead and distilled this information and put it together?
Not yet. We have committees, so individuals are going out to the cities. And at this next meeting, we'll be coming back in. We'll be receiving information from them. And then a discussion will happen at that time as to how we're going to put it together and present it.
Did you have something, Tom?
No.
Okay.
So do we have a representative for the CAC?
From the 21st of October. Anybody volunteering?
I will. Yes.
Okay. Manager Duval. There you have it. Thank you, Mr. Aller.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments about the staff report, administrator's report, engineer regulatory report?
Question about what's on the agenda for the next CAC meeting?
Okay, go ahead.
What's their presentation, do we know?
Something about ecology, some kind of ecology, wildlife, wait, habitat.
It's him.
It's you.
That's it, okay. Okay. Interesting to hear your perspective on what's going on. You might want to come.
So I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
So I have a couple of questions here. Have, this is in the regulatory program area. And some discussion about, we're talking about proposed draft changes and things like that regarding the, is there, do we know when that's likely to take place? I'll just ask the questions here. And, and do we have any kind of procedure or protocol to, as to how we're doing this? And is the TAC, are they the ones developing this? And do we digitize any of our permitting information yet?
Listen, Peterson, manager Duval, I'll start with the last one. Yes, all of our permitting information is digitized. In fact, if you go on our website, there is a map and you can click on the different permits and see their status. Regarding the rule process, so a, a development came forward in a draft form to us that is located in a bluff area. And the design of that project was such that, well, it wouldn't have been good, just put it that way. But they would have been able to make it compliant with the rules. So really, at this point, Engineer Sobiak and I met with Councilman, Councilor Welch to discuss just looking at our high-risk erosion areas because the entire site is in that high-risk erosion area. And how can we modify it to really promote LID development in that area? To do cluster housing and to back away from. And what they had shown was their water resources or stormwater management being put on the top of the bluffs in, in their conservation area. So that was really all we wanted to do now. The process would be, we will engage, Engineer Sobiak, Council Welch, and myself will engage the TAC members initially. That's where we'll start because those are the partners and the technical experts that will have a look at what we propose to do. We will take that comment from the TAC and we will bring it to the board to ask, would you like to move in this direction? If you'd like to move in that direction, then we involve the CAC at that point to comment on what we have. If you don't want to move in that direction, then we don't go down that road. It would be considered a minor plan amendment. We would have to do all of the notifications necessary for that. I buried the lead, that development that prompted this discussion has since been pulled. It's not in the works right now. But that doesn't make the need for it any less urgent. So that's really what we're looking at right now, something. And it'll be, actually, it'll be very good exercise to meet with the TAC and with the board to talk about, okay, here are the limitations of our regulatory program. Even if we make these changes, these are still the limitations that we would have. We've talked about this before. There's, there's going to be, have to be some part of what we do that's really incentivizing a developer to want to do it. I know some other watershed districts will, will sit down and give basically value-added engineering to the developer. They say, well, I'm aware of, and I talked to you about this a bit, Manager Peterson, President Peterson, where I'm aware of the city zoning ordinances. I'm aware of ours. Do you mind if we take a look and suggest some way that you might be less impactful? But that's the, that's where we're at with it right now. As far as the full overhaul of the regulatory program, I would still like to align that with our plan update. I just, I feel like, so in 2015, when we implemented the rules, re-implemented the rules, 2016, 17, and 19, we changed the rules again. And that is a really taxing and arduous exercise and spends a lot of time. So I don't want to start just piecemealing the rules together. I'd like to come in with full set.
So I guess generally, my question comes up because based on my experience here with the permits where the board has been engaged, it seems like we're mostly dealing with variances. And so it seems like our rules now become a matter of managing variance. And I'm wondering how that might fit into future? If you have any notion as to how that might fit into the future rules, changes?
Listen, Peterson, manager Duval. Engineer Sobiak can speak to this as well as anyone else. Every rule change we have made, it has seemed that invariably the next applicant that came in was a variance. The more prescriptive you make the rules, actually, the more likely you are to have variances from those rules. So it gets back to that balancing act of we can't do everything through the regulatory program. So we need to find some other way to really incentivize proper development on land. That's going to be working with the planning departments, working with community development directors.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
So, so in that vein, that was what this thing was about. So right now, our rules are, we don't want to exceed whatever runoff we've got. We've gone from 10%, which was resettlement, to 50%. We've gone from 10%, which was resettlement, to 55% essentially. So with an urban area, so how do we move back to, given climate change and more intense precipitation and all the other elements of that, we got to move back toward the 10%. So how do we factor that in is going to be the challenge, I think, what the board's going to, and our staff is going to try to figure out.
How do we not only prevent degradation moving forward, how do we restore some of the resiliency that was there naturally?
And any other questions on any of the other reports? Okay, hearing none. I'm looking for a motion to adopt Resolution 24-061. Receiving the reports.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-061, receiving the above listed reports.
Second.
Go ahead.
I'll second. Okay, thank you, Bunny. All those in favor of the Resolution 24-061, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there are no nays. And we have a board representative for the next meeting, Manager Duval. So we are now on to the consent agenda. I am looking for a motion to adopt 24-062, which would apply only to 2024-064 Energy Point, Center Point Energy XL Service Center.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-062 for permit 2024-064 Center Point Energy XL Service.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, no questions. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 24-062, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Now we're on to new business. The first item that we have is the moved item, removed item, which was 2023-059. I believe you pulled that, Bunny.
I did. Thank you, President Pedersen. Making notes. I just, my question was on Plan Sheet C7. Okay. And it regards the soil that is between the filtration shelf and the wet pond. I think he's looking to pull it up maybe, or not anyhow.
He's finding it.
Finding the sheet.
Okay.
I'm actually not part of the meeting.
Okay.
Which one are we at?
The consent item that was pulled for permit.
What are you, what?
Page C7. It's towards the end in the plans. Very end of the document. Okay. It's like, where's Waldo? Right at the bottom.
Yeah.
So this plant site, so I'm still understanding this, but it's considered restricted and so can't practically meet the standard abstraction volume that's required in our rules. So it feels like this is an important part of it to meet what they can. And so then on the very bottom, there's a section of soil, there's a note. Are we in? There, it's on the left, bottom-left corner, I think is where it is. But it says that it identifies the area of unknown soil between the filtration shelf and the wet pond. And the plan assumes the soil qualifies as impermeable soils and that they basically assess it during construction. So my question was, who makes the decision that those soils are actually impermeable? Is it on them? Do they have to document it? Do we need approval? So I'm asking you, I guess, Engineer Sobiak, your opinion is if that should be like a stipulation to the permit or something that they document that that is. How do we define what impermeable soil is and they have an incentive to define it very liberally?
Right now, the way it's set up is the contractor building it and the builder would be responsible for identifying that that material's apt. I do think it is a good idea to include that some type of verification be provided because the functionality of the biofiltration area is key on that.
Yeah.
Something that's not required per the rule.
Okay.
But I do think it is a good idea to ensure. The other thing is, is prior to releasing the financial assurance, they need to demonstrate that everything is functioning as designed.
Okay.
So that would be one way that the district would be able to observe and say, yes, it is functioning, or no, it's not.
So it's really the, how do you get the information to agree that this is impermeable?
Easiest way, in my opinion, is to be there when they're building it.
Okay, yeah.
And observe it. That is something we could put in as a stipulation, is that they inform us, you know, three days prior to constructing, identifying the soil, the district get out there and inspect it to agree.
That, that would work. I would propose that we add a, I don't know if we have to do it now, a stipulation to the permit conditions that they, as you said, notify us three days in advance so we can have somebody inspect it.
Sounds good. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Any other questions or comments on that particular item? Hearing none.
Manager Crafton, did you?
Well, I was, I wanted to ask about the trees, but.
Yes, we'll do this part first.
Okay.
All those who are in favor of adding the stipulation on to the testing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, so now Jill, you have a question.
So where are they taking out all these trees and do we have to remove 30 white pines? So I feel like it's.
Aren't there 138 trees they're taking out? Is that not correct from the list? 138 trees they're taking, right there's the big list.
To me, it's like you've got an apartment building and all of a sudden you've told everybody they're evicted. You've just done that with a habitat for anything that's using these particular trees. So for me, that's an issue, but I just wondered where, do we have to, do they have to take all of these out? They're saving a lot of the, I mean, oaks and whatever are really good trees.
They're saving what's on the outlot, but they're not saving pretty much what's on lot one, two, three, four, and five, from what I looked at. Yes.
Again, this is going to be very similar to a prior permit that you've looked at, beyond clay, where the, this, the tree clearing is something that doesn't fall within the district regulatory. So to be honest, we don't really look at the trees that they're taking out. This development is proposed. We look at it as to how can what they're proposing meet the district's criteria.
So does, so we can't comment on that, you're saying? Or we can?
There's no legal basis to comment on it. You can express curiosity or concern.
I express major concern.
Based on the fact that we can't comment? I just, we got to do something about this, because to me, this is super resiliency and a lot of things happen and.
I agree. I'm 100% in agreement. But we can't really say much about it because it's not in our purview. Yes. Well, of course, they're not removing all of them, but they are removing 38 trees.
About 38.
38 trees of significant size. So that means there's probably others that are smaller that are not on this list.
So whichever birds, et cetera, use the white pines and they're out, they're out of luck. They're just.
President Pedersen, Managers, a few thoughts on this. The first one being, there is simple buildability. If you look at the tree removals, they are as a result of grading to put those houses in. But this goes back to where we need to build that cooperation with, partnerships with the cities. Because if you look on here, these are their, this is their setback line. So they have to meet this minimum setback. So this is where, if there is a way for cities to say, you know what? To save these trees, you can change your setback to this, to some other. So this is where the regulatory program might not always be our answer. We need to find other ways that we can incentivize this movement. Another thought that I had on this, and Engineer Sobiak and I have gone over this and also expressed our displeasure with the curve number methodology that's used by everybody. So there might be a way in our rules, and we have not vetted this yet, but to account for tree cover in their modeling. Instead of saying that it went from a poorly wooded sea soil to grass sea soil. There may be a way to do it there, but these are the things we'll have to work through. So that it's going to, again, have to be two parts. You're going to have to get the cities to say, yes, we're going to, you know, these could all be custom graded and we're going to forgive you the setback requirements on this lot, or, you know, change their road width or things of that nature.
So we got this on a list someplace?
Pardon?
We got this on a list of someplace of?
Well, that would be coming out of our plan and the communication efforts that we'd be doing.
I watched a program on Nature Canada, and it was on urban trees. And they've got some kind of a tool to help track the urban canopy. So they said it'd be 60 days before it'd be available to see the recording. But I know I was going to try to forward it to Leamington, but, and I think I mentioned it to Terry.
That'd be great.
But, but it'd be nice to have a tool like that to help. Because that shaded canopy is huge in terms of climate temperatures.
And it seems to me there's quite a few trees that are in the backyard that, you know, they're not, where you're putting the house, obviously, the tree can't be there. And, you know, within 10, 15 feet from the house, I can understand where construction, you'd want the tree removed. But, you know, like on Lot 3, that one near the very back of the yard, you know, who decided that one has to go?
So.
And some of those others that are, you know, at least looks like 15 feet or more from the house, could potentially also be saved depending on the change in slope of the lot.
So President Pedersen, Managers, and you hit on the last point. It's the slope. So if you look at, the dash lines are the existing contours on the site. So here's our 886 that wraps around here, our 884 wraps around here. And, and so they have pushed the 884 to here. So they're filling from here to here. And then they're cutting or filling from here to here. And that's to make that drainage work to get to this stormwater BMP. And again, that's where, meeting with them initially on the plan, there might be an opportunity to say, you know, can we put all the drainage here? And so, so, so again, it goes back to just what I'm saying. If we can get to the table during the concepts, we may have opportunity to work with the developer to say, did you think about this?
How do we do that?
Need to get the cities on board. We need to get the cities to invite us to the table.
So is there, is there any jurisdiction that has any regulation over trees, for instance?
Cities.
The cities?
Yes. And they're all different in our watershed district.
And as a green, green stuff city, that's.
Seems like that should be a big component of some element of what we're doing to figure out how to talk about this.
Right.
We just need to be sure we get them to the.
So this is difference between Minnetoka and Chan?
Yes.
They would all have a different rule regarding this.
Yes, like the city of Edina has got a really tough rule. You take down anything, you got to put back two inches of caliper for every inch you take down. And so now they have huge problems because they've got these little tiny lots and they're taking down trees and there's just no place to put them. It's like you got to put an orchard back there in order to be able to fill with, either that or else you got to pay them big money. For every inch you don't put back, you have a certain amount of money you have to pay. So it's, every city is different, every city.
So we have a real opportunity when you invite them to the table for the planning?
Yes.
For the 10-year plan to say, help us or?
Yes.
So I've got another question related to the abstraction volume. Basically, the restricted site means you can't abstract enough water to meet our rules. Is that correct?
Correct. It means that on this site in particular, given that there's the clay soils and they observe high groundwater, it cannot infiltrate. So that really restricts what type of abstraction or holding water on the site that you can do. And what they're proposing here is using that biofiltration bench and vegetation to do evapotranspiration.
And do they get to the abstraction number that way or no?
They do not. They are, they, they fall way short of the 1.1 inch. They don't meet the first restricted site criteria, which is half, so 0.55 inch. They're doing the maximum extent practicable and doable on their site.
So it, it still feels like, okay, if they put in five houses, or I'm sorry, four houses instead of five, they'd have that one lot that seems like it's too small already. And you could maybe put in a, a holding pond that just slowed down the water. So it won't infiltrate. But you can, in, like they're doing up in the Red River Valley, you can put in a large retention basin and have a control on the outlet so that you let the water out before the rain and then, you know, gather the rain. And that way, you're not belly washing the creeks and the lakes. So that might be something we could try and add to our rules.
President Pedersen, Managers, yeah, extended detention. We have talked about it in terms of stream protection or other things. And Bluff Creek could be utilized here. It could be utilized for reuse. So that's some of the other things that, as we go through the new plan update and the rule changes, you know, the managers need to start thinking about, you know, where, where do we want to draw that line? Where do we want to dig in our heels and say, okay, but you didn't do reuse on this site? Because they're going to say, well, then we need a homeowners association or somebody to take responsibility of it. And, and so then, you know, Engineer Sobiak is left in a position going, okay, that makes sense. I don't have the ability to, the authority to say, no, you have to do that. So that's that conversation that, you know, the managers really need to say, yep, you know what? No, we're, we're going to dig our heels in here and say, you need to really evaluate every possible method.
We kind of have to balance too. And one of their issues, I think, if I read it correctly, is they really don't have enough turf grass to spread all the water they're going to get without causing other issues, because it won't infiltrate. Even if you spray it on the lawn, it's going to end up in the basements or something. Or they'll end up with a sump pump and, you know, yeah, so.
And I, and I still have concerns about the storm ponds. Because I think those heat up and they add to temperature. So I'm not sure that they're, that the trade-off there is with the runoff.
It seems to me that really, at the point we're at here, we just, there's nothing really that we could do to follow our rules and to deny this. It's more, we've got to work on, how do we make the situation better in the future when things go?
Come up on this on a number of.
How many times? Yes. How many times? Yes.
So, so this is just building a case for having to rethink how we deal with this.
Right. I think this is going to be, this is going to be the thing that's going to happen more in the future, where a five-acre lot, which had one home on it, now has five lots on it, five homes on it. It's going to keep happening. The smaller lot, they're going to take the little house down and put the ginormous big house in with a 10-foot easement to the lot line. I mean, that's, that's what's going to happen.
President Pedersen, I think part of our problem is not that we have a lot of already restricted sites that are then being redeveloped. And so maybe it's how we deal with restricted sites, we can adjust. So it's kind of hard to say. It's like, you're already restricted. So we're not changing our overall runoff perhaps or something. But it's just the fact of the clay soils, we have a lot of, is that?
Very true.
President Pedersen, Managers, one other thought here, just going back to where we can work with cities. So cities' tree ordinance, we talked about, everyone's different, but it's usually some number of caliper inch for some number of caliper inch removed. But then what they allow is, they say, well, you have to provide screening because the neighbors are, they don't. because the neighbors are, they don't wanna save or whatever. So the question that comes to my mind as I look at this, are these pines here and then these scattered hardwood, would it provide more leaf interception or better if instead they actually planted a cops of trees? And if that was requirement, is there some way we could look at it and say, okay, there was this many cubic feet of leaf interception that was on that site that you were no longer providing? Now we can tie it back to hydrology and run out. So these are the things we'll have to think through as we move forward. Is there some way to be creative and to tie it in and not run afoul of the law?
Okay, so obviously, we're sort of back to the point where we need to, uh, look at approving this permit, so.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve permit 2023-059, 3 Oaks Development, as presented in the, uh, Recommended Board Action section of the permit report.
And that's got the stipulation for the variance on it.
With the stipulated amendment.
Right.
With the stipulated amendment that we previously approved.
All right, and you're seconding it? Okay, great. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the permit with the stipulation with the variance on it, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So we're done with that item from the consent agenda. We are now to the, accepting the September Treasurer's Report. Can we just have a straight vote on this to be able to just do this? Okay. Any questions about the September Treasurer's Report?
So I have one question.
Yes.
So again, everybody looks at these things differently because they have different experiences in dealing with it, but. And, and this is probably not our absolute final format going forward at some point, but it looks like we have about 60% of all of our expenditures yet to be spent in the fourth quarter. And I haven't looked at the detail to figure out how that's happening, but do you have any general comments on that?
President Patterson, manager of LA, yes, uh, Upper Riley Creek. That's it in a nutshell. That's the thing of that.
All the blank spaces down. Okay, thank you.
Comment, I did see that's coming to Chan Hassen's next council meeting, you know, to approve something for that.
Yeah.
So that's moving forward.
Good. So I need some sort of a, yes, we all are going to approve to accept the September Treasurer's Report. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Next, approving payment of the bills.
I move that we pay the bills.
Second.
Alrighty, all those in favor of approving the payment of the bills, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? None negative? Next is adopting Resolution 24-063, approving bar task orders for Lake Lucy and Susan and lake diagnostic study and management plans, which is TO 047, TO 048 for shoreline and vegetation management, fisheries management, TO 049, Red Rock and Mitchell Lakes watershed and lake diagnostic study, that's TO 050. Do I have a motion?
So I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-063, approving bar, uh, task orders for, uh, lakes as listed.
I have a second. Great. Any questions? Yes.
President Patterson, managers, I just want to point out that I, uh, put in the wrong statute, uh, in the, to where, so it should be 103B, 201, 231?
231.
231. So not 103D, that's all it states, 103B, 231.
Okay, so you, whoever made the motion and seconded, you're okay with this change here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any other questions or comment?
So one, this is at the new reduced price?
This is at the new reduced price, that is correct. And we do have, um, funding available that we can cover those, those costs.
Okay, managers, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
No opposed? And next we're on to the discussion items. Terry, would you like to talk about these?
Yes. President Patterson, managers, uh, the first item to discuss is the culvert crossing at Galpin Boulevard for Bluff Creek. If you'll remember, um, last year, we came to you with a, a, a price estimate for what it would be to replace that culvert. And it was in the neighborhood of $500,000. And with that discussion, um, and, and staff recommendation, we did not feel that at that price, the benefits being gathered from that warranted a half million dollar expenditure for, uh, headwaters, uh, crossing, where we really don't have fish passage issues, et cetera. The city of, at Chan Hassen, offered to put it into their overall project plan because they felt that it was a, a good thing as long as they're in there to replace it, and we agreed. At that time, um, their engineers' estimate of cost was $300,000. Since then, when looking at the constructibility of it, and Engineer Sobek, if you can pull up the number because I'm not remembering it off the top of my head.
400 and something, right?
Yes, since they, the constructibility, there's sanitary sewer and water main that needs to be relocated as part of that project. I met with the city of Chan Hassen, and they agreed that it was in their interest anyway to replace the sanitary sewer, so they would, they would pay for that. The water main, they would pay for the pipe. But because of the constructibility, that long span, they would, they need to put a valve at each end. Those valves are $70,000 each, I wanna say? Or was it 70,000? 30, so 70,000 total for the two valves. Bottom line is that the, the delta between what it would cost to replace the culvert in kind and what it would cost to put in this box culvert has gone back up to, uh, 460,000 is in my head. We are approaching where we were at before. The city, um, is in agreement to put it in and to pay for those, the, those, the cost of the water main if we pay for that $460,000 delta. The structure has been ordered. So even if we choose not to, if the managers decide that this is not adequate expense, there is some expense that the district will incur, um, re-shelving, or we may be able to reuse it somewhere else, but storing it is a problem, large structure. Bottom line it, I am less optimistic that this is an appropriate expenditure of funds right now. I am, however cognizant of the city of Chan Hassen and the partnership we have with them. I believe that they will understand why we do not think that this might be worth moving forward with. But it is up to the managers ultimately to decide if this expenditure is justified for the benefit we're getting. We can still do all of the Bluff Creek restoration that was in our original plan without this crossing, realize the same benefits that we were. That's what I have on it, Engineer Sobek. I don't know if you have anything you want to add or?
He stated it perfectly.
Oh, with, with that, I, Mr. Smith has, huh?
Who ordered?
Box culvert.
The city of Chan Hassen ordered the box culvert.
So, and they did that without an assurance from the district that we would be going forward?
They did that under the understanding that, that we were going to partner with them.
That'd be bad.
So, I mean,
Technically.
I guess the question is, what is that understanding? Do we promise to pay for restocking the culvert?
I don't look at this the same way you do. I look at it as we've, we've developed a relationship with the city of Chan Hassen. I really would not like to go backwards in that relationship. I think we could discuss with them, possibly storing it for us until we find a place to use it. There is, if you remember, um, last year, a gentleman came in with a private drive down, um, Bell Road that needs to be replaced. There is a grant that's out there that's available. We could maybe work with them and utilize it there. Mr. Smith does have a point. We did not tell them to order it. We, we did, however, say that when we looked at ordering it, it was nine months out, or what was it, Scott? There was, it was a long delay.
Close to a year.
Yeah.
So Minister Jeffrey, could you just restate what the, the project was again and, and what our involvement was? I remember it vaguely, but I don't remember the details of how we got to this point.
Yes. Um, so, let me pull up a map, and we can talk about the area and the project, um, in more specificity. We knew that we were going to do Bluff Creek from, um, Galpin Boulevard to Trunk Highway 5. We were going to restore that section. As we looked at it, we recognized that it was right by the headwaters of Bluff Creek. And there was an opportunity there to do some restoration within that headwaters. Look at me trying to multitask. That's not what you wanna see. Let's get rid of that. Okay. So we are in this area right here. We weren't even gonna do the, so we were, the original project was to do from here, can you see? Yep. To West 78th Street here.
We were as a watershed.
Watershed. This was entirely our project. Then we, then we looked at this wetland up here, said, is there an opportunity to get some restoration, get some water quality benefits, habitat benefit out of here? When we looked at these ditches, remeandering and all, that became kind of a nightmare because, because Long Acres, when it was developed in 93, 94, all of the lot lines run to the center of the wetland. So the wetland is under ownership, private ownership, at least from this trail crossing to the west. So we decided that a ditch check place somewhere along here would be appropriate. In looking at it, we looked at, and Engineer Sobek, I'm gonna ask you because I forgot what the size of the existing culvert was. What?
42-inch.
42-inch culvert, um, round, right? So we evaluated, or bar engineering evaluated the cost to put in an open bottom box culvert or actually a sulking box culvert that we can get a naturalized bottom in to get fish passage. Was really, that was the purpose for fish passage. Because if you remember the, all the hydraulic exercise that went through to make rights match was, was difficult. When they came back, it was about $500,000 to do that, and we recommended against it to, to the Board of Managers at that time. The city is redoing Galpin. They're putting it around about here and redoing Galpin all the way up into, uh, Deep Haven. So the city, said, came back to us and said, well, initially, they said, well, I don't think there's any county money, state aid won't pay for it because it's not related to stormwater. They came back later and said, well, actually, we think we can work it into the project. And their engineer's opinion of cost was $300,000. And it actually made sense because I was thinking, you know, they're already excavating, that's why they're seeing the savings. But once they found all of the other ancillary utilities that are interfering with it.
But they identified 300 as our cost.
No, they identified the box culvert as 300,000, and we were gonna pay anything, any, the difference between just replacing kind and that 300,000. So our cost would have been, you know, whatever, 195,000, 200,000, something like that.
I remember that.
So, but now that we have more solid numbers and we have the idea of the buildability of it, we're back to nearing that half a million dollar threshold.
On our cost.
That would be all our cost, yes.
Okay, so what does everybody think?
So, well, what, other question or two? So is there any possibility of getting a grant to help pay for it?
Not at this point. It, we did apply for a grant. We applied for a flood reduction grant. We did not get that because it was pretty marginal. Like, I agree, but I had to try. Did, we did apply for the grant.
Clean water fund grant, but not for the culvert.
Not for the culvert, but it would offset our costs elsewhere on this project to pre-uplaying for that. Because we budgeted for the project without thinking we would have grant funds. But again, that pool of money for grants this year is not very big. And there are, oh, yeah, there are a lot of applicants.
More than there is.
Always more, yeah, applicants and there is money.
So it, it, it's a long shot, I think, that we.
So the other question then is, um, have you scored this with our other projects that are kind of sitting on the shelf compared?
Engineer Sobek, I believe you, we did.
We did score it.
Scored like a 38 or something?
It's scored relatively high. It's, it's well above 30. I don't know the exact number.
If my memory is correct, we've, we've done projects that were just above 30, 33, something like that.
Yeah, so most of our projects have been 36 and above, but we've got a couple of it, we did, uh, in the 32, 34 range, and because opportunity presented itself, similar to this one. The other option, I have floated to the city and they did, um, they did not say no. Would be, do you need all of the, all of it paid for in this financial year? They said, maybe not. There might be a way. So that might be another option would be to work it out and spread that cost over a few years.
So is there any possibility we could say them, we're gonna pay up to whatever the dollar amount is? And if it's more than that, you all have to pick it up?
We tried that. They said, we'll just go back to, so their budget is already overrun. And so they're like, if, if you can't pay that delta, we need to go back to our original plan. But we, we have met with them a few times to discuss this.
So there's a big difference between 195K and 460K?
Yep. About 260,000.
Yeah.
And that was due to the uncertainty of the project ways back and the additional adders? That it went up from the Route 160 to 460?
No, uh, President Patterson, manager of LA, nope. Well, uncertainty in his, in his, they did not, um, know where all of the utilities were at that time and, and that they would have to move the water main down. They'd have to move the sanitary sewer down, they'd have to insulate, they'd have to put valves on both ends of it so that it was buildable.
Timeframe?
Oh, go ahead. It seems like if we do like we did with, uh, the bridge on Duck Lake, try, no, Duck Lake Road, where it was spread out over, I think in that case, four years, it seems like that would be easier, easier for us to swallow and still keep us friends with Chan Hassen.
President Patterson, managers, I'm gonna ask you, Engineer Sobek, I feel like they've answered us indirectly. Not all of these costs that were in their spreadsheet were direct. Not all of these costs that were in their spreadsheet were directly from the contractor. Is that correct? Is my recollection correct?
Mr. Jeffrey, that is correct. About 95 to 96% of them were. The outstanding ones that were not were connected to the valves at the water main, a little bit of the water.
Seventy thousand.
So my, my comment goes back to Manager Jeffries. Is this an expense that with all the things that we're thinking of doing that maybe you're more excited about doing? Does this make sense for us to spend that amount of money, even spreading it out on something that does not have great value to the watershed district?
But it did score in the thirties.
The overall project.
Overall project scored, excuse me, but not this particular item. Okay. Okay. Then I feel much better about that. Okay. What do you all want to do?
So the original project did not include any money for this. Is that correct? Our project? There was no money for dealing with this underpass.
President Patterson, Manager Bill, that is correct. The original project started on the east side of Galpin and continued to the north side of West 78th Street.
And what was that cost again approximately?
I've got to look to the guy who put together the engineer's opinion of cost.
Is this the tail wagging the dog kind of thing?
I want to say one, two, one, two, or was it one? It's hard to say anymore because we've added so many things to it. That's only, we added two things to it.
So for the, the wetland, Patterson, Manager Bill, for the wetland restoration piece and the stream restoration downstream of Galpin, that was estimated to be roughly 600,000.
President Patterson, I have a question. Is this something that we could direct you to come back with us for options for like returning it? Maybe them storing it, the things that you've identified as possibilities and we can move forward from there? Feels like we don't have the information we need to know to make a decision on what to do.
But it's coming and.
Right. I mean, how?
Patterson, Manager Nelson, I, I think the only unknown is what our cost would be to, to tell the manufacturers to
Take it back.
Restock it, back into that. I don't have an estimate of that.
So we can make a motion such that we'd like to scrap this project as long as we don't pay more than a hundred K for restocking charges.
Be that much. So.
Are you making that motion?
I, I would like to make that motion. Yes.
More than, yes.
It looks like.
President Patterson, Manager Ziegler, I'd just like to add, looking at their, their cost estimate from the bid now that they got from the contractor, the box culvert was, is totaling about 125,000. Just the structure itself. So you'd be looking at what that restocking cost would be relative to that.
Some percentage.
Some percentage. I've seen some as high as 50%, some as low as 10%.
So that's substantially less than forking over the 460.
Right. So we can make the motion that we'd like to scrap this project as long as our restocking cost is less than 50% of the cost of the culvert. And that would be like 50K. Is that right?
You think?
Roughly 60, I think.
I'll, I'll second that.
President Patterson, discussion. So is it maybe perhaps to say that we want to say, no, we don't want to move forward with it, but do you need to maintain the ability to, we might be able to use this in the future or we want to restock it?
President Patterson, Managers, that's actually a pretty good point. I mean, I think we will have opportunity to use it. It might not occur for five, seven, 10 years, but you know, if, if it's 60,000 to restock it and 125,000 to buy it, if we can get Chan Hessen to store it for us or even at Spring Road, there might.
Be a place to put it.
Or.
And we could make an, a motion to amend the motion to include the possibility of instead of restocking, maybe have a storage fee up to a certain amount.
Or they would store it for us.
For free.
For free.
Okay.
Or we could go back to the original of, I could just come back to you with what it's going to cost to restock it and ask Chan Hessen if they're willing to store it for us.
So we're not in a big time crunch?
Will you?
Yeah.
They are. But I do think we could go to the November meeting. We were trying to finalize the agreement. We didn't move forward with the rest of the agreement based upon this.
Let, let them know that we're very hesitant to spend half million dollars on this portion of the project.
So President Patterson, Managers, Ziegler, Managers, I think what I'll do is go back to them and say, yeah, or, or if you're okay with this. Our board did not feel comfortable spending that much money on it. You could either A, come up with some additional money. B, tell us what it's going to cost to restock it. Or C, would you be willing to store it for us if we paid for the cost of it to use it somewhere else? And then I can come back to this board in November with an answer for that.
Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Yes. We all agree.
Yeah.
Good luck. Okay. Next is the cooperative agreement with the city of Chan for Upper Riley Creek Restoration and Ecological Enhancement Project, including the decant.
President Patterson, Managers, I am happy to inform you, this one is moving along much better. There is a little bit of confusion about, here, let me go over to this project area. So if you'll remember, this project is restoration of Riley Creek from Trunk Highway five all the way down to Lake Susan. We are in the process of getting all of the agreements from the private landowners along here. All of them have either signed the agreement or agreed in principle after their attorneys have reviewed it to participate. Our one exception is, let me turn on some parcel lines here. Our one exception is actually the city of Chan Hessen. Not because they're unwilling, but because there's a strange quirk in the way this was recorded. So this property right here is owned by the Chan Hessen HRA Housing Redevelopment Authority. The Chan Hessen Housing Redevelopment Authority no longer exists. It is not an entity. So Council Welch has been talking to legal counsel for the city of Chan Hessen. And what I think is going to happen is they're asking, since the Chan Hessen HRI, the Chan Hessen EDA and the Chan Hessen City Council are all the same. They just meet under different hats to quitclaim deed this property to the city of Chan Hessen. It, it's, it becomes an issue because the decant facility sits mostly on this property, but some of it's on this property. And we need to tie in to the sanitary system and draw electric from that. So once that is resolved, then we'll come back with a final agreement for the managers to review and execute with the city of Chan Hessen. So we can move forward. One other thing I would like the managers' input on is we have one sticking point with the city, but I think we have worked through it, is that if the city of Chan Hessen does not go through with the construction of the decant facility, that they would be responsible for 100% of the engineering costs that went into it. They said, what about 50%? I said, no, but we can set a sunset, say, if you have not constructed it within seven years, then you must pay back 100% of the engineering cost. They are in agreement with that. I just want to make sure the managers will be in agreement with doing something like that.
I'd be fine with that. Everybody fine with that?
Yeah.
Yes, we all are.
Um, that's all I have on that agreement. Engineer Sobiak, was there anything else that came up?
Those were the two items.
Yes.
I have a comment. So, um, so you say a say of a seven-year agreement. Is that the cost is there today, the same amount of money seven years from now?
President Patterson, Manager Nelson, yes, because it's, it's costs that we've already realized with bar engineering doing the design.
Okay. Great. Uh, we are now on to the update of the LAK versus Riley Perk and Terry Jeffrey. Are we going into closed session, Mr. Lewis, or?
Madam President, I would say there's no need to go into closed session unless the board has any questions, but otherwise I don't think there's anything for soon.
Okay. Anybody have anything? Nope. And also for the second item as well?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Great. There is nothing there. We will go right to manager reports. Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss with the board?
So I have just one thing. I was at a freshwater event. And they pointed out that, you know, on our ballot coming up, we're going to be voting to extend the amendment to the Minnesota Constitution that involves Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund renewal. And the question is, shall the Minnesota Constitution be amended to protect drinking water sources and water quality of lakes, rivers and streams, conserve wildlife habitat in natural areas, improve air quality and expand the access to parks and trails by extending the transfer of the proceeds from the state operated lottery to the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund and to dedicate the proceeds for these purposes. So so far, since the lottery started, there's 1.1 billion dollars that have gone into this trust fund. And, you know, literally thousands of good projects that have happened, not all related to, you know, cleaning up the lakes and rivers. A lot of it's been park-like stuff or dedicating land, you know, buying land and saying, we're going to keep this wild. And, you know, maybe we make a park sometime, but right now it's, you know, natural areas. So the other caveat is on the ballot and I, I pulled one to look at it. If you don't vote yes, you effectively voted no.
Oh.
So.
Yeah. That's interesting. Haven't seen.
So, um, and it surprises me that, you know, I haven't seen this being a big thing. Everyone's expecting it to pass. And it probably will if people take the time to read it.
Right.
You know, but if they don't and just say, well, I, I don't know anything about that. I'm not going to vote on it. That's how it was a no vote.
Okay. So everybody needs to vote yes.
Yes.
I already have too.
Okay.
Well, good for you guys.
And isn't it like at the bottom of the second page or something?
You got to go through a lot, I'm sure.
It depends on the ballot. So on mine, for my precinct, it was on the right side. So all the, the voting was on the left side and this was on the right side, but it was on the front page, not on the back side.
We had two things we had to vote for, whether we want to repeal, you know, the ranked voting things. They were both on the right side, but yeah.
Anything else?
Just if any, any way to spread the word, you know, especially to to environmentalists that they need to read that and.
Yes.
President Patterson, Managers, maybe we put it on our website?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oh my gosh, certainly. Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
I have an idea.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So we get the day of packet at Bowser. And so there's always all these wonderful projects that, that are in the highlights. Are we sending in projects? Because I was thinking like the preserve would make a wonderful project to, to send in that we had done. And crosshair. But I just think we ought to be sending in more of the stuff that we're doing. Get some recognition for watershed districts as opposed to just soil and water. Sorry, but it's just.
I.
It'd be nice to have some more visibility. So, I mean, that was such a gorgeous project and that's the kind of stuff they do. They have pictures of all these wonderful things that people have done. So.
At the preserve.
I just thought I would throw that out there in case you want to try to get more media exposure.
President Patterson, Manager, yeah, to be honest, I tend not to send things in because I'm just happy that we're doing the work. But I can certainly start doing, last thing I sent was for Josh Maxwell to be employee of the year.
Well, that'd be good.
Yeah.
I did. He didn't get it. Apparently they didn't.
Well, they are so wrong.
But maybe we could put it on Liz's plate to, to submit stuff like that or not. Communications person.
Thank you. Anybody, any other manager? Yes.
I had a couple of items. I, myself and Manager Crafton attended the Waconia Water Regional Water Stormwater Reuse Tour. It was a very interesting, and I talked to the Director of Public Services, John Hockes from Waconia. Afterwards, in his comment that the cost support from the watershed district was critical to the ability of Waconia to even move forward or consider doing this. You know, just they really, they would not have done this if it wasn't for
That was the, that was the CCW at home.
All believe.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the city manages a system. I think partly the fact that they have wastewater treatment system. So they're familiar with pumps and doing reuse was very helpful for them in making it a success. They irrigate 30 acres and the ball fields alone reduce their potable water use by two and a half million gallons a year, which is. And one of the ideas that he talked, he's from Colorado relatively soon. And just as far as a future thing that hit, the current water system piping is sized provide for fire suppression. So like 10-inch water pipes of potable water that if you could separate those as you're doing a development, you could have a two-inch pipe for potable water and have other sources for fire suppression potentially. So it was an idea I hadn't heard and it did not fly in Colorado of all places, which you would think that would be. But just as far as master development plans, looking to the future, it was a new concept that I had not heard about, you know, alternative piping scenarios. And his opinion was money is best spent on partnerships that incentivize good behavior, especially like developers, you know. And so I really, we keep hearing that over and over again. And another one was how you think about water reuse as improving infiltration, not necessarily on being able to irrigation and making it, you know, a good use for that, but just thinking of it with their tying it into the ecosystem health, that it's an infiltration issue and how you, you know, make that work. I was excited to read, and this is Manager, Engineer Sobiak, that Atlas 14, we're talking about using, but Atlas 15 has been put out for sort of comment. And what's notable is that it will build upon the foundation of Atlas 14 to account for climate variability and estimate future conditions to provide for climate resiliency. So that's a big shift in coming up with those stormwater curve numbers. So I thought that was interesting. And then back to the migratory bird program from Andy Forbes. There's a lot of enthusiasm about the modus antenna towers that network. So it's a international network that's collaborative research network of towers throughout the world to track migratory birds. And the Spring Grove property just happens to be in an important migratory pathway, the important bird area, which is an IBA. That's an official acronym. And we could potentially offer that location for somebody, again, as a partnership to do that. And it could tie into education and something like that, some other participation. Coming in electrical source and a location, you know, it's like that could be something we could.
Bon Society is going to want to be our friend now.
Brought that to my attention a couple of months ago.
It just, yeah. So that was interesting. And yeah, and then he had a really good, the website for the hundreds of thousands of migratory birds that are passing over right now. I mean, it's, you can, you can track that on, if a site.
Patterson, Manager, yeah, I love that idea because again, as we talked about reaching audiences that would not otherwise be it. So there's a whole audience. audiences that would not otherwise be it, so there's a whole audience of bird watchers or other people that might come now to the site and learn about the water. So, yeah, I think it's a great idea for a number of reasons.
We need to stock a few pheasants, and pheasants forever people do have money to give to, I actually had a, a program that was in St. Louis Park that they donated money for. So it doesn't have to be in a wild area, it can be in an urban area.
So they're not going to allow hunting, right?
No.
Steph Maxwell would like to.
Don training area.
That was, that was a good tour. I commented that we had been there on a tour to Waconia before and seen what they had done when they were bringing new businesses in and how they hooked them all up to, I told them, I thought that was brilliant.
It was interesting to see the apartment next door to the water reuse pond was, I was advertising Pond View, so it's also a amenity. It was a beautiful, but it becomes also an aesthetic amenity for a community potentially.
It is, but that's a double-edged sword. We've been trying hard to get Realtors not to do that. Two years later, when it's covered with pond weed, they're like, they said it was a water feature. It's got water.
And then finally, I went to the Meet the Mayor event in Chan Hessen at the senior center. Anyhow, but I met a lot of, there's a lot of city staff there sponsoring the event, and the city manager of Chan Hessen came up to me and said she'd like to meet, that they're really interested in meeting the watershed director, managers, and she was, wanted to set up a time to have lunch with, bring somebody from, I think, public works along. So I'll be moving forward with that, but I thought they, they actually came to me to.
Hey, great.
President Pedersen, Managers, City Manager Hockenin is, I think, the biggest reason Chan Hessen has made the turn. She is a, she's a very forward-thinking visionary leader. When she was with the City of Victoria, she partnered with Minia Creek Watershed District on a number of things, a large park that's out there, as well as the walkway down by the, the lakefront there. We've met with her about the Lake Anne Preserve area, and she, she sent all, she got all excited with interactive things she wants to do with kids out there and bring about. So I, I think there's a lot of opportunity. I did talk to Mayor Ryan the night that we had our open house, and she said, after, after this is settled, the litigation, that she would like to have us then come and present to the council.
Any other manager comments?
If you set up lunch, I'll be glad to go with you.
Okay, upcoming board topics, we've got the board and staff repeat, which we've talked about already a few times this evening on the 17th. And to note, the Spring Road tour got changed to the 18th, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, so everybody knows that, and then the conference. So I believe we are at the point where I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Thank you all very much for attending. Thank you for your comments, and fun to move forward.